I'd like to call our meeting Greensburg City Council to order and invite you to join for a flood pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Tony?
That's great. Lord, we thank you and bless you that you've given us so much in this community. Continue to use us and glorify yourself through this meeting. Bless our decisions with wisdom and discernment. I give you all the praise in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Tony. All council members are present and we have a quorum. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Counsel? Not then I entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. I would like to thank every volunteer and all the organizers that worked for the last 10 days, or the 10 days of the state fair. I was, I was able to spend a shift up there and it was, it's great to be able to go up and people that stopped by with their Greensburg stories and I just want to thank everybody that had a hand in that. Counsel member reports?
I don't have a report, but actually do have a question for Ed maybe. This goes back to the lease agreement we signed with the solar company a while back. I recall that one of the provisions of that lease was we requested that they present a site plan to our planning commission by early September and since we kind of have half that date, just make a request and update on that, the status of that.
Alright. As I recall, the lease did call for their site plan, their completed site plan to be submitted to the city by the first of September. We have missed that date. I've emailed Mr. Greg Schoonover, one of their principals, and the email came back undeliverable. So I haven't had any further contact with any representative of the company at this time to ascertain why they were unable to meet that deadline. I'm gonna, my plan is to continue to attempt to contact them.
Thanks, Ed.
Dee?
Well, my way of being, I just talked to Troy after today because then their principal contact with me, they still calling to just submit a site plan and they have told that their financing is going, but they still want to do a court plan at 2:00.
Well, the last week of August, I know I did, and Ed knows, I visited personally with Troy and he said, "Yeah, they're getting close." And I said, "Well, let us know." And we have heard, had no communications through City Hall about the lease that we're aware of.
Well, I think in working with, with Dee, I think we could, we'll be able to follow up and contact Troy and get a, get a better update for council then.
Ed, your report?
I, I just have a few items, Mr. Mayor. This past week, with Christie doing most of the work, we're attempting to follow up on some research and conduct some research into our local rec commission. We've been advised that there's an opening on there due to the resignation of one of the members, Mr. Tetter, who happens to be a city appointee. We have one other appointee on that board. Like I say, with Christie doing most of this work, we're trying to figure out what the term limits are, the correct verifiable term limits, status, the term status of each, each board member. Christie has been following up and been able to accomplish obtaining a copy of the rec commission's bylaws, which we didn't have a copy prior to Christie's work. Our goal is in the near future, more than likely by next council meeting, to be able to brief council on the verified term limits for our two appointees and offer recommendations for nominees to fill the unexpired term of Mr. Tetter. But that should be coming up at the next council meeting. This past week, I was also contacted by Mr. Chad Poor, Greensburg Rotary Club. Council will remember, we had signed a letter of support for their grant initiative to be able to do a project in a park here in the city. Chad's contacted me and told me that they've been awarded that grant and they're in the process of putting some ideas together on how to, how to appropriately use that grant funding and they'll be ready to bring that to council at the next meeting as well. We've had contact with representatives from BNIM. They're following up on our request that our lead certification be obtained for the city building. The last contact we had with BNIM, we're told that their plan is to submit our lead certification documentation at the end of this month. So they think that we're probably okay on points for lead platinum, but that of course will be up to the U.S. Green Building Coalition.
Does that mean that our, that the certification has not been submitted yet? Oh.
They've never submitted it.
What seems to be the holdup?
Well, the, the holdup, as I understand it, BNIM of course is saying that the construction company didn't provide all the paperwork necessary in our contacts with that construction company, or we're led to believe that they submitted all the required paperwork and in fact submitted documentation of additional points in the, in the chance that maybe in the certification process, some point or other would be taken out. So I'm not sure what BNIM was able to do to overcome that shortage of what they said was documentation, but they have overcome that obstacle and they're telling us that they'll submit at the end of the month. The city has in fact paid the entire amount for that lead certification and I've reminded them of that, referred them to the contract yet again, and I understand that they're now ready to go forward at the end of this month and submit for our lead certification. It has been a very long drawn out process, one that should have been accomplished well before this, but the good news is they're telling us that they'll submit that at the end of this month.
So who was the money paid to for the certification?
BNIM. And that amount on the contract was $85,000 for the lead certification, all facets of the lead certification, because initially we were hearing that there may be some additional fees attached to that, but I've reminded them that the contract states that we had paid in full for that lead certification. So I hope to have very soon some, some additional positive information on that process. But at this point, it seems fairly positive that they'll get that submitted at the end of the month and at that point, it's up to U.S. Green Building Coalition as to whether we have enough points for platinum or whether it's some lesser degree of our lead certification. Additional topics regarding this building, this window here has been broken somehow. I'm hoping that when Pratt Glass is able to remove this glass, they can give me a better idea why it's broken. It's a large U-shaped break going from top right to bottom right as you stand outside and look at the glass. Very expensive glass, I'm sure. I don't have the quote back yet from Pratt Glass, but this is going to be an expensive repair, I believe. Additionally, on the front of the building, we have some apparent water damage from a leak from the roof. I visited today with Diamond Roofing and they're doing an investigation as to what exactly is leaking up there and will offer some solutions as to how to repair that damage. And the last topic that I have deals with our council chamber. Some time back, we were able to work with Law Kingdom and we've worked with a lot of entities, I understand. We have a lot of documentation about the acoustics challenges in the council chamber. You know council more about that than I do. It is problematic. We have an interesting disclaimer at the bottom of our, our videoed council meetings that say that the acoustics problems are not the fault of the media center. I agree with that 100 percent. Law Kingdom, in an effort to continue to work with us, and at no charge, I might add, at this point, they provided us diagrams, renderings, et cetera. They provided some of their acoustics information from their acoustics experts, if you will, that indicate that panels on our walls in here will help improve drastically, I think, the quality of the acoustics in the council chamber. And I'm reminded by the mayor that I should point out why the pattern is set such that these, it would appear apparently initially to just detract from the aesthetics in here based on the fact that the panels are, are going to be offset. They're not directly across from each other. There is a strange pattern, but it's in an effort to allow the, the sound to bounce back and forth between the walls. So that's why they're set the way they are. We have the remainder of the material that's, a large portion of it has already been received. We're waiting on the material to cover the acoustic panels. Mr. Paul DeWes is working with us and has done all of the install that you see here in the chambers as of today. The fact is that this project is also going to be covered under our USDA funding for the City Hall project. We have more than sufficient funding to install the acoustics panels that you see here today, the beginning of the acoustics panels, the mounting frames, and that should allow additional funding should we decide to, to obtain a trophy case for the front of the council chambers, for the entryway. But this project should be completed prior to the next council meeting and my great hope is that we'll see a marked improvement in the acoustics in the council chamber. And that's all I have.
Questions or comments for Ed? For public comment section, just like to welcome everybody. Anybody would like to address the council, public comment section? If not, then we'll move into our consent agenda of the minutes of the September 4th, 2012 meeting and appropriations ordinance 1888.
Just to let council know, check number 21020. I visited the cam about that. She will actually be voiding that check that's to be paid out to actual advertisers.
Which one? Oh, okay. I'd make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Been moving seconded. I do have a question then, since we're pulling that check out, do we need that in the motion to pull it out of the consent agenda? Otherwise, this shows that we're paying that.
The, the motion can include...
Do you see what I mean? Only have to pull those.
Right. The motion can include removing that check and due to the...
And then have another motion to allow administration to take care of it.
I, I think, if I understand correctly, I think one motion to approve the consent agenda with the...
Removal.
Removal of check number 21020.
Okay. Just so it's reflected in the minutes so that it's all... So that's my, would be my question, Mark, or would you be willing to amend your motion?
Yep.
Would you restate that, please, then?
I would move to approve the consent agenda with the approval of minutes of the council meeting September 4th, 2012 and appropriations ordinance 1888 with removal of check number 21020.
Second.
Been moving seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Erica, thanks for the clarification. Appreciate it. Ed, we'll move right into our business items.
Council, business item 4A is considering a contract between the city of Greensburg and Kennedy McKee &amp; Company, LLP, for the financial statements, for our audit basically of the city's financial statements for calendar year ended December 31st, 2012. When I first spoke to Jim Kennedy when he was visiting us last, I guess I understood he wanted a contract for next year. Well, in essence, that's what we're doing, approving the audit contract of their work on the 2012 audit for next year. So this document approves their audit of the current year's financial statements to be conducted next year, which is an annual process, counsel. I guess it just was a clarification in my mind. You probably already knew what's going on with that.
Questions on the contract with Kennedy McKee Company?
Nothing has changed on this as of Gordon from one year to the next, pretty much.
No, I mean, it's their standard engagement letter. I don't know about the pricing, was it reflected in that? Their bid, is it just in their average normal rate for Kennedy McKee? Contract simply approves their audit of our financial statements.
They have an estimate, counsel, on page six, the last paragraph, reflective of hours that they've spent in previous years.
I'd make a motion to approve the contract with Kennedy McKee.
It's been moved and seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor, aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Business item B.
Counsel, if you'll remember, I did discuss previously Mr. Skaggs' discussion with Mick Kendall of the possibility of purchasing his property directly north of Public Works facility. Questions posed by council, I couldn't answer at that time. I hadn't had a survey of the property. I hadn't met personally with Mr. Skaggs. I've taken a walking survey of the property with Mike and Mick. There is no buried infrastructure, no cement, nothing that requires any kind of remediation. In discussing that property with, with Mick Kendall in my case, the only costs associated with that, in addition to purchasing the property, future infrastructure needs, should the city decide at any time to install a fence around there, we would have the cost of the fencing. There's no immediate need of a fence. That's something that can be addressed in the future. I think, question was raised that I had to think through, do we need this property or do we want this property? It's not my understanding from dealing with Mike and Mick that we need the property. They could use the property. They've used it for storage of materials, even with Mr. Skaggs' ownership and his permission, or at least with his blessing, we've used it to store materials prior and they would continue to do that if the city owned that property. Good question about the infrastructure, anything buried there. My visit with Mr. Skaggs and discussing this with him, he's paid several thousand dollars in the past to remove the cement, so there's nothing left there. And I discussed that with him. It's not buried underground. It was actually dug up and removed. And we've also checked with the courthouse and all taxes are current and Mr. Skaggs is reflected as the current owner. It's, I think at this point, the questions that council had raised, I hope I've provided answers to that, but Public Works could use that property if the city were to purchase it. Mr. Skaggs discussed a price with me of 1,000 and has stated that he's certainly not making money on this, on this, on this business proposition, because he's certainly paid more than that in any cement remediation that he's already conducted. If council approves of that purchase, then I would like to work with the city attorney to, to prepare the correct documents for that type of a purchase. And the divzone or something like that. That entire area is now industrial.
So according to our code, would we, would we need to fence that property before we were storing any supplies on it?
Do you have an answer to that, Christie?
I believe that, that may be the case. If I recall, the story about their materials is supposed to be fenced in. I'd have to look for sure, but I recall it's, it's supposed to be fenced in for it. My question is whether that's for commercial property or industrial, whether that code was, was the case, so I'd have to look at that.
Or residential. Counsel, we'll get an answer to that.
Well, it sounds like not only could we have a use for in the future, it sounds like we already do have at least occasionally use for it now and if we are using it, I would think we probably should own it. It's nice that Mr. Skaggs has allowed us that use so far, but for having use of this property, I don't have any problem just outright purchasing it for the price quoted.
Counsel, any other input?
I'd make a motion to be approved, purchase of the portion 502 North Main and the Robert Skaggs.
Second.
Been moving seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item C?
Counsel, on the agenda, item C, we've discussed in the past also about Mr. Renicki, Mr. Scott Renicki's interest in clarifying, first of all, who owned the property that's more or less on his old survey shown as what appears to be an easement. A document that Christie was able to find shows that in 1962, that strip of property contained within Mr. Renicki's property, in accordance with, with the survey and the plat map, that property's actually owned by the city. We have worked with Mick and Mike and looked through that property and we apparently have power lines through there. It's also a drainage ditch for stormwater runoff and in visiting with Mick, there's also a west flowing sewer line that runs directly east and west that's located immediately adjacent to that bridge directly on Olive Street. So there is a sewer line that also runs down through there. It's my understanding from talking to Mick that he believes that any easement we have in the city right now is fairly established by documentation in the past. In, in this endeavor, I would hope that any additional easements that we would need can be conveyed with the, with the deed as we sell the property to Mr. Renicki. I think it's staff's recommendation that as long as we maintain that easement through that property, there's nothing that prevents us from selling the property to Mr. Renicki so that he contains the entire lots that, that he currently owns. Ownership outright rather than a very large piece down through the middle of it that the city is owned. I don't recall whether we had given you a copy of that yet in your, in your commission package.
Yeah.
They have one? Okay. Well, if counsel has any questions about that, between Gordon and I will attempt to kind of describe that a little bit better, but I think the way the document to convey the property, I think it adequately, and Gordon's worked on this with us, I think it adequately conveys our easement rights through that property if we were to sell it.
Yeah, I would, I didn't know about the sewer, the sewer deal and I would probably add some thing about the drainage too. At the time, I was just dealing with the electric power easement, but I just have to add some language to make sure we had those incorporated in.
And I guess the other question I'd have, when you say maintain the easement, are you just saying we have the easement or are you saying maintain it mowing and all that?
Good point. We have access to the easement.
Okay, well, the word maintaining might be misconstrued.
That's, that's my shortcoming on maintain.
Because I have easements, each one of us have easements on our property, but we're, we are to require to maintain those easements.
I understand.
Correct? Or am I wrong?
You're right.
Okay. So that word maintain can be a gray area.
Well, and that's, that was, that was my word and I probably, I'm glad you clarified that. It's, it's not a matter of maintaining. It's, it's retaining access for city utility easement purposes.
Yeah. Well, I know Scott said he'd been mowing that for years, not knowing that the city owned it. More than, he just thought it was an easement going through there until he had a survey. So Ed, how would you like to handle this considering what Gordon has said about reviewing that sewer deal?
I, I don't think there's any rush on, on absolutely needing to close this out now. I imagine a, a motion could be made to say approve, approve the mayor to sign this with the changes Gordon will incorporate with the, the sewer line easement, or we could simply table this for the necessary changes and address it at our next council meeting.
Either way, I'm going to...
Those are the two options, counsel, whatever you choose to do.
I'm comfortable going ahead and approving the deed and Gordon's revision.
You need a motion of that effect?
Yeah.
Discussion?
I guess go ahead and make a motion that we approve the deed, Scott and Mrs. Renicki for the property, 700 East Kansas, ending the provisions by the city attorney reflecting the sewer and drainage easements.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Ed?
Yes. Counsel, business item 4D, staff is, is asking council to approve an advertisement for a position. What we've seen in the past for a building inspector, and I think the terminology was a building official and a code enforcement officer, typically what we've utilized in the past is a person to do building inspections or a building official for us, in the person of Mr. Bob Walker and Paul DeWes, who does residential inspections for us. Bob Walker has taken a position in another city. Paul DeWes will be leaving soon. In addition to that, we also have need of, of some code enforcement here in the city. Christie has had a lot of response from other cities to ask how they're doing it and many cities are combining those positions just due to the reduction in the workload for a building official and combining those two positions since they are fairly closely related, but to be a code enforcement... of Mr. Bob Walker and Paul DeWes, who does residential inspections for us. Bob Walker has taken a position in another city. Paul DeWes will be leaving soon. In addition to that, we also have need of some code enforcement here in the city. Kristy has had a lot of response from other cities to ask how they're doing it, and many cities are combining those positions just due to the reduction in the workload for a building official and combining those two positions since they are fairly closely related. But to be a code enforcement officer doesn't require the level of training that it does for a building official. So... But having said that, many cities are combining those positions, and my request is that we have counsel approve us to advertise for a person that could do both of those responsibilities. I've visited with Ms. Pam, our treasurer, and it should be a seamless process where we've paid, potentially in the past, maybe two different people to do two different functions. We can pay them... Pay the same person to do both of those functions. It's still a part-time position, and we have the funding for that currently, much as we had continued to pay Mr. Walker to come down and do commercial or building inspections. We have the funding to continue that. I think the request is to combine those two positions into one, and our new personnel manual also says that in combining or creating a new position, it takes counsel approval for that. I think those are two things that we're going to need to have addressed fairly soon, and I would appreciate counsel's approval to see if we can advertise for a person to take both of those positions.
I think it makes perfect sense to combine those. They are, as you point out, they are somewhat related, and I think probably does increase our chances of finding qualified individuals just because, again, more workload with those to combine, whereas separated, it probably it's harder to find, it's just fewer hours there. So I'm all for it.
What type of education do they have to have to do that?
For a building official, especially at the commercial level, they have to take and pass multiple levels of testing in order to be certified, and I don't have a list, I apologize, of all of the things they need to be certified in. There's multiple levels for a commercial building official. Paul, in fact, Mr. DeWes, has taken some of the building official or building inspector courses, but that has certified him at this point as only a residential building inspector. He's not certified at that type of a level to do commercial properties.
I would move that we authorize staff to advertise for a building official slash code enforcement officer.
Second.
Been moved to second. Any other discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Counsel has pointed discussions so that you're aware for your confirmation and blessings on a mayoral appointment of Judge Mike Freelove down at Ashland to be our Greensburg Municipal Judge to fulfill the unexpired term due to the resignation that we had months or so ago. Mike has... In visiting, both Ed and I have visited with him, and he is willing and able and interested. And if I would just want to open up the discussion, if there is a conflict with that, let me know before I would make that appointment and ask for your confirmation. Well, if not, then I would like to appoint Judge Mike Freelove to be our Greensburg, City of Greensburg Municipal Judge.
We'll need to get him to do the...
Gordon, before you go on, I just would like a vote of confirmation of that, just to reflect that in the minutes.
I would make a motion that we authorize the mayor to appoint the Honorable Mike Freelove to fill the unexpired term of the Honorable Land Dixon for City Municipal Judge.
Second.
Been moved to second. Any other discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, counsel, for that confirmation of the appointment, and we'll notify Judge Freelove of this action tonight. Gordon?
Just to let you know, when I came over today, I stopped and did the final title review for the water treatment plant USDA loan grant, and I'll make my report on that and final certification, get that to USDA. I'm not sure, probably some of you are aware, maybe all of you, that in the continuing litigation involving John Colclaser and him paying his fines, that there's a very past week, and he refused to sign the deed again, and the judge put him in jail for 90 days.
Long days.
Until he... Or until, I would guess, he would say, "I'll sign it," and he would get out. And I don't know if he's still there or not, or whether he signed. I guess we'd hear if he had, but anyhow, that's what happened.
I thought the whole purpose of doing this, so you wouldn't need your signing.
No. We would hope we didn't. The title insurance company required it. It's probably a requirement that really isn't necessary, but they, in order to get the title insurance company to sign off on it, they made up that requirement.
And they can put you in jail if you don't sign something?
They can put you in jail if you don't obey a court order.
It seems sad, the man didn't shoot nobody, rob nobody, and had a job and does volunteer work when he goes to jail.
Well, it seems sad to me that somebody can't just do a simple thing and stop it from happening. Put it years ago. Could have cooperated with the city and done the right thing and decided he was mad the city didn't want to. And the city can drop it all if they want to. Anyhow, I wanted you all to know that that happened. Hopefully, maybe something will break and we'll be done with it, but...
Anything else, Gordon? Questions or comments for Gordon? Need of an executive session for any reason, attorney-client, personnel, non-elected?
Not for me or Mr. Mayor.
Is there anything else to come before us tonight?
I have a couple items.
Okay.
I had a sheriff's officer come pick me up Saturday morning. Didn't break the law. He wanted me to go with him. He took me on Main Street down here, and we crossed in the first block, and he wanted to show me how the plants that the city has growing in our planters in the last couple years have got bigger and taller and taller, and if you're in a small car and you pull up, like we were going west, east, you can't see down Main Street until you stick your nose out there, quite a ways. And he said this has kind of been a growing concern, with a few people had mentioned it to him, so he knew we had a meeting tonight, wanted to know if I would bring it up, and I said I will. I don't know what we can do other than that style of plant that's there will get bigger every year, unless it's...
But then...
But we have the same thing at home, and every year it gets taller and taller and taller unless you crop it back, or if you replace it or something. So that's something we might think about.
You can't cut it back, though.
It's that purple flowered plant that's in those planters.
Same flavor.
Yeah. I don't know the official name of it, just... But he said if you're in a pickup or something, it's not a problem, but not everybody's in a pickup. And he said you have to get, stick out in the Main Street a ways there to be able to see around. And he said numerous people have said they almost hit somebody there because they started to pull out, and there was somebody there that they couldn't see. The other item was, the rodeo club approached me wanting to know what the city was going to do with the little building out at the airport, the little terminal building or whatever. Said if it could be moved and the city wanted to possibly get rid of it, they might be interested in it if it would be able to be moved, which I don't know whether it is or not.
Is it a wood-framed building?
Yep.
Okay. I know some of those are block buildings.
No, that is a wood-framed building. I looked at it one evening. It looks to me like the quarter footing built the building and then poured the floor on the inside, because you step up into it, and the floor is higher than the foundation outside. So I don't know whether it could be or not, but that'd be up to them if they thought it could be moved and we wanted to get rid of it, rather than demolish it at some time.
I think eventually that was the intent, so if it has a future use, that would be a good thing.
They wanted to make an office building out there, close to their rodeo arena, rather than using the community center that is so far away from the rodeo arena. Their contestants have to go that far back and forth. They wanted to have somewhere closer. And they said they couldn't really afford to build one, but they'd seen that and thought that'd ask us if we'd be interested in getting rid of it.
I can investigate that, see if they're interested in covering the cost for moving the building.
Well, yeah, it'd be up to them to move it, you know? I'd say if you want it, it's yours, you move it, you know, X amount of dollars or whatever, whatever the council would decide they felt like was worth.
Staff can look into that and kind of...
Does the city own that building?
I believe so.
They have a conditional use of there, so anything they add to those fairgrounds has to be approved in the planning commission bill. It would be very simple to put that on an upcoming agenda. We have a meeting coming up beginning of October, so they would... If that's something that's okay with the city, if they can get a site plan together quickly, I can get it on a planning commission.
Maybe you need to get them to go look at it to see if it's even possible it can be moved. If not, can't be moved, then there's no sense in going through the other steps.
Right.
Okay. I'll get in contact with them, let them look at it, and if they're...
Gordon, on city property like that, do we have to go out to bid on it?
No, I don't think so.
Well, that's another question. Should we put it up for bids at that point?
I don't know. I mean, it's not like it's on skids like the building over here on the old city hall that you could just go get and take. That has more value than something that may be fairly well attached.
You say you might get away with all of it, you might not.
Yeah. So anyway...
Community development, too, so that's another aspect of the city's decision.
Well, if you guys look into that, Ed...
Ruth Ann has questions.
This is a building that's not on any of the...
This is, on my last survey with Mike Hayes out there, we talked about some of the buildings, and the one that I believe you're talking about, Mike Hayes has told us that's a city building, city-owned structure. So the question then becomes, can it be moved, and at what cost, and are they interested in that? And to get answers to that...
Should I contact the rodeo club and say, "Listen, we're looking at it. You go take a look if you think it can be moved."
I'd suggest having them come and talk to you.
Ask them to get in touch with me, and I'll know what to bring to counsel.
That'd be better, yeah.
Largest part of the cost of moving is the works of the building.
I know we had public comment section earlier. Ruth Ann?
Just a real quick question. One night when I was here, and we were talking about the airport buildings, the entire area here, and you mentioned that a lot of people were interested in one of those buildings.
Well, that doesn't have anything to do with this business. Nothing to do with that. Mark? Matt? Sandy? Eric? Rex? Anything else? If not, I declare the meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone.